Call in and voice your opinion live every Saturday morning from 10 a.m. to 12 noon. Yeah, that's right, 10 a.m. to 12 noon. Don't forget to shop talk with your girl, because right here, oh, we keep it brief.
We doing a whole lot. Look, I'm like doing a whole lot this morning. Good morning, Nick. How's it going? I can't hear you on the computer. Why are you so low? Let's see, uh, turn up your volume on there. Let's see, because you're not on mute, so the listening audience can hear you. Um, I don't know why, not, not really. You're really low. Um, so we'll work on the technical difficulty and then we'll get started immediately. So, let's get start. Look, I'm like, so, let's get started. We're trying to get this technical difficulty together. Once that's all together, we'll start shop talk with Mel. Is that all right, lovely people? Let me see, are you on yet? Are you, are you able to talk to me? Let me hear, see if I can hear you. No. You're still low. See about checking your volume. You're not on another line or anything. It just can't hear you. Okay, there you. Let's see, still can't hear you, and I don't know why. I try logging out, logging back in, see if. And until we get this technical difficulty together, we will. What's going on here? We've got a lot going on. I don't know, let's see. That's weird. And I refuse to let the enemy go. And everything is going haywire. So, we're not gonna do that. We'll go over here. And see if we can get something going. Are you on? Can you hear me? A little better? Okay. All right. Welcome to Shop Talk with Mel. Let's just go ahead and make it happen, love. With testing one, two, testing one, two, the devil's really busy this morning. How you doing, Nick?
I'm doing great. I'm doing great. Yeah, the devil's busy, but guess what? He is gonna be defeated. He might as well go back where he came from.
I heard that, gone back down. What's going on? How does it feel to be 50?
Oh, my gosh, it doesn't feel any different, but I have finally joined the 50th fabulous club. Yes. I'm blessed to see 50, especially after this last year, what everybody has gone through.
What about you have gone through? See, so that's, so I wouldn't claim what they went through. Let's talk about you having gone through anything, so that's a blessing in itself.
Yes, definitely a blessing.
I'm excited. So, any plans for your 50th, for a week? Well, since the wine now, he has where they could go to prom, weddings can happen and all that good stuff. So, are you happy about that?
Yes, I am, because that was right on time for my 50th birthday party on March 13th. Yes.
Okay. You planning something big?
Yes, it's Nicole's 50th royal affair. Hey.
Okay, I'm not mad at you. I'm not mad at you. Remember, we talked about the, um, the young lady, helping to these hot topics, um, until I get our guest come on. Uh, the lady had, um, uh, Butch, The Bachelor, Lindsay, Rachel Lindsay. She disabled her Instagram account because she said that, um, torrent of hate by members of The Bachelor Nation, they had a problem with her. They had a problem with her speaking out and saying it wasn't okay when, remember Harrison was saying, is, um, this happened in 2018? And is it that is inappropriate for 2018 or 2021? And she said, none of it's, none of it's appropriate. So, what's happening is that a lot of people are going in on her defending Rachel Kirk Connell over her photo taken, you know, when she attended the antebellum party. I call it the plantation party. So, what's your thoughts on that? So, they're attacking the black girl who's speaking up and saying it's inappropriate. What is happening?
I agree with her, but a friend of mine said that she didn't see an issue with it because it happened so long ago.
That wasn't so long ago, it was 2018.
No, I'm talking about just us acquainting because of the plantation period. It is no longer a plantation. It is used for parties now, but still.
So, wait, it was an antebellum party. That's the issue.
Exactly.
The issue was not that she had a, it was a party, it was the type of party. So, you have somebody to actually say that they were okay with, like, because it happened so long ago with her going to an antebellum party. Do they not understand what that is? And see, I had a problem with that. There was a thing that was going on. What is it? Say, um, I can't even remember. The new thing, like, uh, something over history? And I'm like, you have to know your history. You, it's like a new, new thing that they have. You have to know your history, and that's a prime example. So, when your friend actually says she didn't see anything wrong with it, what was your thoughts? Honestly, I, I just really want to know where, where the head.
I don't think she understood what type of party it was, and she'd be saying, and she'd be just saying in general, because, you know, it's no longer an actual plantation. And I was just like, listen, I don't care. It's just the fact that that's where a big part of our history came from, where we were slaves and.
But, but do you understand where I'm coming from? It's no longer a plantation. But your part, it was an antebellum party.
Right.
It wasn't a wedding reception.
Listen, I don't care what it is. If it's at a plantation, an antebellum party, a wedding, I'm not going, period.
And, and see, you know, and, you know, I, I understand, okay, woe was a plantation before, you know, they do parties there. That's what she believes. But my problem is the type of party. I'm not going to a slavery party. It's not happening. And 2018, and to say that it happened a while ago is nuts, because 2018 was the day before yesterday. Like, give me a break.
Exactly.
Give me a break. How about the, uh, dog watcher? Anyway, that she, um, Rachel, the black bachelorette, she ended up, going off of, um, suspending her Instagram, for those who just tuned in, her Instagram account because of the hate that she was getting. I'm like, this is nuts. Now, uh, Lady Gaga, do people, you know, some of you guys didn't know that she has dogs, uh, Bulldogs. Her dog walker was shot, and somebody stole her dogs. And he was shot, and here's the thing, um, she had French Bulldogs. Her dog walker was shot in the chest trying to save the dogs in Hollywood. So, clearly, the dog walker was walking her dogs, and they wanted to steal her dogs. They, they, they accomplished their goal. They stole the dogs. She's on there begging for her dogs back. I'm like, um, how, and put a reward out for $500,000. What about the dog walker?
Exactly. And what is she doing for them?
Uh, listen, I have, she's happy that, you know, they recovered her dogs. But what about the dog walker? Because let's be realistic here. I didn't know I was putting myself in harm's way walking no dog. The wor, you know, the worst that could happen to me is me being bit. That's just me putting myself in those shoes. The worst that could happen is me possibly being bit by these dogs, not being shot. Like, this is nuts. Um, the sources say, this is according to TMZ, that a woman appears to be a good Samaritan. He claims she found the dogs and brought them in. Now, they did say claims. LAPD is continuing to investigate, and the shooters are still on the loose. Who shot the dogs?
That's crazy. Probably somebody that wanted those dogs, and they knew the dog walker's routine, so they had a plan. It wasn't nobody that just decided to shoot somebody for them dogs. They've been watching that dog walker for a while, for those dogs.
Now, now, see, she offered a $500,000 reward. They don't know if they're gonna give it to the lady. Do you think they need to give it to her?
Uh, I would wait until after they investigate to make sure she didn't have anything to do with it. Now, if she gener, if she genuinely did, it was the good Samaritan that found the dogs and turned them in, then yeah. But if she has something to do with it, mm-mm, she need to go to jail too, because you almost took somebody's life over dogs. And believe me, y'all, you know, I'm, I'm a dog lover. I love my dogs, and I would do, you know, to keep them safe. But you tried to take somebody's life over some dogs, and some dogs that didn't even belong to them. I'm not understanding.
Shot in the chest.
Right, that's crazy.
I was thinking at the beginning, I was like, well, was the dog walker in on this? Like, what happened? But they have, you know, accord, according to TMZ, TMZ, and the area on which she lives, they had surveillance. So, they had surveillance cameras that actually, you know, witnessed the attack. They showed the attack, so you can actually see. Shot in the ta, in the chest though? I was like, oh, they tried to kill this man.
They literally tried to kill that person.
It's, it's, it's terrible. I'm like, what is the world coming to? But I want to talk about this one incident where the guy went in into a store, similar to like your, uh, dollar stores. Let me get, pull that story up, so I can give you the accurate information. But I want to say in Oklahoma, like a dollar store or a Family Dollar, went in the doggo store, had a smock. So, clearly, he must have worked there, or he knew somebody that worked there.
Right.
Now, now, put yourself in his shoes. You, you gotta follow me on this one. And he told the girl behind the register, she had customers, that he was her relief. Okay, so she said, okay, he didn't get behind the register, cashed out the other customers in the line, no less, and then locked the door, and then stole a bunch of lottery tickets, they say, that was missing a bunch of scratch offs, and, um, cigars. Now, as a worker, would you ask questions? You know what I mean? Would you be like, okay, who are you? Where are you at? Or if they say that you're relieved, and you look a lot, oh, who looks sad? Watch, time to go, bye-bye. What, what's your thoughts? That's hilarious to me.
Yeah, um, first of all, how simple was she? Because, like you said, I'm gonna ask questions. Oh, you must be new. Who coming in to train you? Uh, or am I training you? You, who's work with? Because they have to be trained. Ain't just gonna come in. I, I've never met you before. Um, who, are you on the schedule? What's your name? You know, the simple questions like that. And then on his end, he was stupid. How you go steal lottery tickets? Those lottery tickets are accounted for, so try to scratch them off if you want to, and try to turn them in. You ain't getting nothing. You going to jail. You just wasted some lottery tickets.
Well, see, here's my thing, though. The way things are going now, remember before, like, uh, your manager or someone will introduce you to the person, you know, if they were new? But I honestly, like, the way things are now, if you ready to go, I don't tell her how long she was on, I'm your relief. Okay, bossy. You might be from another store, because now they have where they have people coming from another store. They just, and he was dressed appropriately. And I just found it really interesting that you're, you're question, you are questioning. I mean, I'm not a police officer, but you're questioning the girl, the cashier. How is she supposed to not, what are you gonna do? Pick up the phone and be like, oh, okay, listen, if I know I get off at 2 o'clock, and it's 2:10? I don't know if you came from another store. I don't know who called you, and that's a lack of communication, but go ahead, Nick. I see you wanna, wanna say something.
Eh, I, listen, it's just me, and I'm sure several others, but I check my schedule. I see, you know, I know who I'm relieving, and this is, uh, the other places I'm working in. And I thought, you know, of course, me working at home is difficult, but I know who I'm relieving, even if I haven't met them before. And I know who, you know, I see the name of the person relieving me have, if I've not met them. I need to know, yeah, what's your name? Okay, oh, so you're, yeah, that's just me, though. I'm going, I check my schedule. I know who's on the schedule, even if I haven't met tha, that person before, any of them, I know names. And I'm gonna ask her, what's your name? Oh, you're so-and-so, okay. And then, yeah, so, I understand she's probably ready to go, but still, to me, to me, that would have been suspicious all the way around.
Really? And see, in the medical and nursing, you know, you got so many agencies out there, you don't know who's who. So, you know, from my standpoint, I'm looking at it as, oh, okay, and was this person a new person? That, that's what you, you know, those are things that you gotta.
That's what I'm saying, though. A new person to the, even if it was coming from a different store, he still would have been a new person to that store. So, therefore, yeah, you still gonna have to question things. Especially if it's a new person, because, you know, they're not just jumping in and working. They need to be trained. And if it's somebody coming from a different store, yeah, you know what to do, but this is a different store. You might have a few rules, just a little bit different, and so, you know, you, and that also will be on the schedule. Oh, so-and-so from store such and such is coming.
Okay, uh, Oklahoma, Oklahoma City Police Department, I told you I was gonna get this information. He walked into the convenience store near Britton and Broadway, and was able to convince the store clerk that he was there to take over her shift. He was wearing a shirt with the store's logo on it. So, once behind the register, he continued checking out customers. Okay, I won't, I got it right, okay. Checking out customers for several minutes before ultimately locking the door, stealing all the money, cigars, and lottery tickets, and flee, uh, fleeing the business. And then, so the police is looking for him. They saying, oh, you know, what type of car he was driving, and all that good stuff, because they're trying to find this guy. And they do have him on surveillance camera, because he was in the store. I, I just don't, I don't know. That's, that is, I'm like, people getting quite creative with this here robbery thing. That's like.
Forgot about the cameras.
Right, I mean, I didn't even see a mask on either, but he's like, listen, if you tell me you my relief, I don't know if I would actually, um, question it. I'm like, oh, okay, girl, I'm all, listen, I'll be at the house, though. The, I'll be at the house like, what? I just left from there.
Right.
I was like, oh, I'd have gave him the drawer, like, here you go. You know, you got the drawer.
And you know, and unfortunately, they're probably, the, the company is probably going to fire her for that. Definitely.
Well, guess what? The company would, I'd be fired. I will be one fired person, but I'll be happy. I'd be happy I'm alive, because that is crazy.
Right.
That is nut and city. Hey, lovely people, if you want in on this conversation, feel free to do so. Dial in, 515-602-9667. 515-602-9667. It's nuts out here.
Yes, it is. Like you said, a creative way to rob somebody. Well, at least he did it that way, instead of coming in with a gun a, a, and shooting her. So, you know, or threatening her with a gun. So, I guess we can be thankful for that one. Baby, you could always find another job, even if, e, even if it's in another field, but just thank God you have your life. So, that, I definitely understand.
What, listen, moving on to great news, uh, the stimulus packet was approved. They agree, you know, we actually got it going, but now it has to go to Senate. So, let's hope that, you know, it was passed.
Oh, yes.
Things work out. I said, this is the longest spent, respent, and spent again, $1,400 ever. Because we, we already know that we just sat there and was like, okay, well, what am I gonna do with my, uh, $1,400? Did you have, for yours? Because, let, let me let you guys know, because sometimes I'll be jumping the gun. For the $1,400, and the reason that it was, um, the reason they approved, and they said it's a go, it passed, is because for the $1,400, each dollar will give the economy $1.25. Y'all go ahead and check that out. Your girl got you covered. But y'all go ahead and check that out, okay? So, that's what they're looking at. It can definitely see stimulus check, stimulate, stimulate the economy. So, that's the goal. But they taking all, look, they taking all that, you done borrowed and borrowed again, and you know the commercials that come out, talk about the stimulus is here. What plan am I found in my television?
Just, just deposit my money and let me go about my business, please. Thank you.
Go from there.
Exactly.
Listen, I made the buffalo chicken dip.
Did you? How'd it turn out?
Listen, okay, so I was telling everybody that, um, I was encouraging people to try a new recipe. Now, you know, like I know, um, some people don't, but I did. And I used the ranch dressing. I thought it turned out amazing. They told me I wasn't supposed to put all the entire bottle of buffalo chicken in there. I like spicy food. I had no idea. Uh, would you say you do too?
Yes, I like it spicy, though. But not the whole bottom, the whole.
Some whole large bottle in there, the whole large bottle. I put it in there. Yes, I did. And so, they were like, it's too soapy. I was like, what do you mean? You need more chicken. And I did the lazy way. You know, you could go and get the chicken breast. I just went and got me some rotisserie chicken. That was at the grocery store, you know, they make the rotisserie chicken, and they put it, you know, put it to the sauce. You could hurry up and buy it, because it's already cooked. That's what I did, but, um, I guess I gotta try that again.
Yeah, we're, we're not so much hot sauce.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I like, I do like it spicy too, but yeah, the whole bottle though, I don't know.
Like, I, I, um, I don't know. I went overboard.
Well, like you said, the news has some more chicken, and I would took care of that, counteract it. More chicken.
More, right, well, I guess I, I could do that, but put it in the freezer, and I guess it wasn't good. The Johnson and Johnson vaccine, they have that out there, and they saying that the CDC is saying it's a go. So, that's another vaccine with the COVID-19. And that's why Uncle D'Wine is opening things back up, opening things back up. What's your, what's your thoughts on all of these different companies coming up with a vaccine? And did you receive the vaccine?
No, I have.
And the Johnson and Johnson is a single dose.
No, I have not received the vaccine yet. I mean, everybody trying to make a dollar, but is it good? Is it effective? Is it gonna make me grow an eyeball in the middle of my forehead? Am I gonna turn into a zombie? At Johnson and Johnson, I'm still kind of leery, because, uh, they got lots for the, the powder.
Oh, yes. Yeah, look at me.
So, it's like, yeah, that's, I would be leery about it. And no, yes, do I plan on taking it? I don't know. It's not, it's gonna be a while, and I don't know, a lot of people jumped on it and have been taking it, but me personally, I want to see maybe in a year and a half, like.
Let me correct this, because I did, I misspoke. Not the CDC, the FDA, Food Drug Administration.
Okay.
They actually kind of gave the thumbs up. Um, they gave, they gave their files on the Johnson and Johnson, um, COVID-19 vaccine. And they said that they meet requirements, so you know what that means. They meet requirements.
Right, just.
Let me just put this out there. Seas get degrees. So, when you say meet requirements, that kind of make me nervous, when you actually put it in there.
That's why I'm like, I don't know.
Authorization, emergency use authorization. So, we are in a pandemic, we're, you know, it's like a state of emergency. Okay, yeah, that passed. Hmm, would it have passed two years ago? Three years ago, since we talk about the 2018 with The Bachelor. They said it's 85% effective. That's what the scientists found.
Is who? 85?
85% effective.
Nah, you got to be at least 95, 99.99999.
Right. Oh, like, like, um, like, who was the father?
Like, who, 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 who the?
Now, at preventing severe illness in clinical trials, and it is 66% effective at preventing COVID-19 cases with any symptoms. So, they're still talking, and this is just me just throwing this out here. You have people who had the vaccine, and they're like, oh, well, we can't guarantee, this is where, with some, some physicians were saying, and I heard it, that people are getting coronavirus still after the vaccine. And then the response is, not all doctors are saying this, but the response is, that's because they didn't get their second injection. Now, this is just my thoughts. My, I'm telling my views, the reflective views of the people on Shop Talk with Mel or the co-hosts. If you give me a vaccine, something very similar to COVID-19, and then I get tested, why wouldn't it show that I have it? You just inserted this stuff in my body.
Right.
It's injected. So, that's what I'm, that, that's just my thoughts. But I had to put that information out there. I try to give you guys all the information that I have. So, we have the Moderna, Pfizer, and now Johnson and Johnson. And Nick, you got a point, because what was it, that recall on the powder? Uh, cancer, ovarian cancer. Um, so Johnson and Johnson is trying to come back? But you say you're not trying, especially 66% with any symptoms.
Because down the road, they'll be saying some, some ingredient they put in there used, and cause, is causing, no. And as much as I love my Johnson, Johnson powder, I was like, wow, like, yeah, I can't.
It, it makes you feel some type of way, especially when you are, you know, it's like you're used to a Johnson and Johnson. That was the one that we actually use. I'm no shady Johnson and Johnson, so don't come after me. But one single dose, if you want, Johnson and Johnson is 85% effective. Uh, 66% uh, with, effective with no symptoms. So, it's all on you, and what you choose to do. The other two are, one has to be at a certain temperature, and the other is, and it's two doses, and then the other, um, just here, two doses. Are you with it, or are you not with it? Now, uh, one, I did see where Dr. Fauci, Fauci, what, how you pronounce his name?
Fauci.
Fauci, there you go. Well, Dr. Fauci, um, was saying that we will be wearing masks um, until 2022. That was his guesstimation. Then there were some governors in a governor's meeting, air quotes I'm using, that said that they don't have to, we don't have to wear masks anymore. I'm following the signs.
Excuse me, um, yeah, I'm gonna wear this mask until we see that this thing has completely subsided. Listen, as much as it gets on my nerves, and I want to wear my makeup and be cute and all of that stuff, but what's the sense of doing that when you got a fit? But yeah, mm-mm, I'm gonna wear this until the, they scientifically prove this is eradicated.
Okay, um, let's talk about Dr. Hassan Gokol. Now, for those who don't know, Dr. Gokol, he was fired over the vaccine. Administering the vaccine, they said to, it was unethical to people who, um, to people, they said that he knew, like a neighbor. Um, did you hear about that? Um, his wife, and she was eligible. She was an eligible candidate. Anyway, he was on, he was on The View, and he had got fired, and what happened was On, he was on The View and he had got fired and what happened was the, the, it only can be, the vaccine could only be out for so long and they had an hour left. So he was calling out, seeing if anybody knew anyone who, um, who needed the vaccine because they didn't wanna waste it. But they felt it was unethical that he gave it to these people, um, without protocol. So would you rather just get rid of the vaccine, throw it away instead of giving it to somebody?
Yeah, to me that, that was just inhumane, because he's trying to reach out to people that possibly save a life and, you know, not waste anything. So no, he shouldn't have been fired for that whatsoever.
I, I didn't think so either. I, I felt kinda bad because I'm like, he, he worked in the ER as well too. Um, he al- he said that a human life always trump any policy issues. And according to the policy, there were, um, it was what, get rid of it? It's over? It's wasted?
That's the problem that we have. There's just so much, like with, with the food industry, they, they, they're good. We're wasting food and, and we have all these hungry homeless people out here. That's why we're in sometimes, it, that's why we're in the predicament we're in as far as financials, because we just waste a lot of stuff and it's just money down the drain. So yeah, I, I agree with him. Like you said, you know, a human life over policy. I one hundred percent agree with that. I, I've won a hundred, you know, that's just crazy. Why would you waste something that still has validity and life to it? You know, and he can possibly save someone else's life who wants it. That to me just, yeah.
It's, uh, let's pin that right there, cause I wanna, uh, since I brought up the fact that he was on The View. I wanna talk about Meghan, Meghan McCain. A lot of people don't like her. She's a crybaby. She gets on my nerves personally. Cause she's always crying, like nobody, everybody interrupts me. Girl, you interrupt people too, like stop. Anyway, she complains, she wants Dr. Fauci fired. She said that. He should be fired, okay? But she complained that she, because she hasn't gotten the vaccine yet.
Well, what did Dr. Fauci got to do with that?
Well, because you know, there's a protocol. So you're dealing with your people with chronic care illnesses, uh, people who are, who are immunocompromised. And she felt that she, you know, since they have that in order, but she felt that he should be fired because she hasn't gotten the vaccine yet. Now, there were some doctors that have been terminated because they were giving their family the vaccine, skipping the line, and that's what they're saying with, uh, Doctor Gokol, that he just likes skipping the line. But the person that he did give the vaccine to was his wife who was eligible. Now, if you are perfectly healthy, I'm sorry, you just gotta wait. I'm sorry you're on The View, but why are you upset?
Privilege. I'm so sick of these people with their privilege. Um, sit your tail down, wait your turn. Don't nobody care that you are Meghan McCain. Don't nobody care that you were on The View. Sit your tail down and wait your turn. What does Dr. Fauci again have to do with that? You wait your turn and go for the protocols. Girl, bye. Please have several seats, several, several, and wait your turn. It's not your turn.
Okay, let's go to the viewers real quick, um. The, here's, uh, Theo says if it wasn't safe, that's one thing, but because of the shelf life, that's another, the vaccine, if nothing else, it still would have been effective even if at a lower percentage. Okay, you know, we listen to the viewers. Now, I said pin that, uh, regarding you would rather, uh, dismiss or just throw away and get rid of the vaccine if it's no longer effective, you know, trash it. How about those who, and I know that, well, yeah, they are, because you need, um, according to Maslow's hierarchy, and these, that's the first one you need to eat. What about those, you see people that are hungry in your fast food restaurants, if the temperature is not served at a certain temp, they get rid of it. I used to work at McDonald's years ago and I used to see that all the time and they would throw it away, but you see this person out in the driveway begging for.
Money and food, yes.
So why, you know, uh, that i- is kinda like, I mean, and I understand you don't want somebody to get sick, but is, you throwing it away? Like you're, you can't sell it, so it's wasted food. So would you rather waste, is your money recouped? Would you rather waste instead of giving it out like this young man, like this doctor?
Right, and they have to account for all of that, all of the waste, it has to be weighed and all, uh, they have to account for that.
Okay, so you have to account for that.
Mm-hmm, it has to be accounted for, but my thing is, like you said, you're throwing it away. So it may be a degree or two lower than expect, than it's supposed to be, or a degree or two higher. That could feed a hungry person. That could feed a hungry child. You know, cause we have a lot of homeless people with children. And like, just, I just don't understand a lot of this anymore. It's that we, that could, that could go to feed somebody that's hungry.
That's what the doctors, uh, that was his point. That was his point. That's what he was trying to say. It's like, well, let's give it to somebody that I know who needs it. And they were on the one A-list, you know what I mean, as far as, you know, compromise, uh, they definitely would have got it anyway. And he just reached out, he asked colleagues, do you know anybody? So everyone that he administered those last doses to were not just his family, it was, you know, some strangers too. So hurry up and administer it to them, but.
You know, to me, I think it's more so they may be looking at, he was giving it to his family. I think that is more so the issue than anything else, is because you, they're think, you know, he's putting his family above the protocol or above, you know, the list, whatever. Um, it should be told I would too.
You would, so like they weren't supposed to bust them. That was the issue, huh?
Yeah, I, I would, I would too. I mean, it's my family. I, I want them to be healthy. I want them to stay healthy. If this is what they choose, then I'm gonna come on, because I'm gonna have to throw this out, so I, I don't wanna waste it. I would do it too, especially with my family. But yeah, it's like, that's just crazy to me.
Okay.
Is he gonna lose his license in behind that though?
Um, that's what they're going for. Ethical issues.
Okay.
That's, that's what they're going for. So I, 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 I don't know. I just, that's like a catch twenty-two. Would you rather save a life or would you rather, like, okay, well, you died and I had these available and like, you're conscious, it's, it's like, you know, like, wha- what, uh, my conscience would definitely be jacked up.
Exactly, that's, yeah.
But I have seen where, um, and I won't say where, to say, you know, to protect the innocent. I have seen where there were vaccines and once you open that bottle, you have to throw it away and then somebody changes their mind. Now, his situation was that it was getting ready to expire. But you have where people will change your mind and you have so many valves there and it's like, okay, well, I'm gonna administer this. People didn't show up. They're like, no, I changed my mind. I don't want it and it's wasted. Do you go to, you know, you don't wanna waste any, do, would, do you throw those two or three doses away? Or do you administer it to people that may want it? And unfortunately, it'd be jumping the line, right place at the right time.
Right, and my thing is if it wasn't touched, that you didn't touch, like, if it wasn't touched, you just opened it and got it prepared and they changed their mind. Why are you, why did they have to throw that away? It was not touched. They did not administer it to anyone yet. They just got it prepared. So I just don't, yeah, some of, a lot of that stuff, but then I guess I'm not with the FDA, the CDC, whoever. Uh, they had their little protocols. I don't understand it, cause I mean, if it's gonna save a life, then, then so be it, but I think a lot of these rules really need to be, um, revised. A lot need to be revised.
Okay, all right, well, let's go on to this guy real quick. Forty-five. All right, let's go on to this guy real quick. This is, uh, in right now, you know, I got to give it to you. Uh, Trump to reemerge at CPAC as GOP tries to plot its future. So I guess they have this, uh, convention all the time, every year, but they're having uh, President Trump speak. Ex-President Trump since. Okay, let, let me. Like, I'm like, let, let me just, yeah, let me just go on here, um, and just let you guys know. Annual gathering of conservatives this weekend in Florida is set to serve as an official reemerge of former President Donald Trump. And we know a lot of people still love him. Uh, it's an opportunity for lesser known Republicans quietly plotting their future in his long shadow to stand out. Now, I see where the Republicans are divided. You have the Trump Republicans and the conservative Republicans. And they were talking about starting a whole new, um, demographic, I guess, with the Republicans. Anyway, they had him speak there. Now, we already know it's only thirty-seven days into Joe Biden, President Biden's term, Biden's term. Thirty-seven days and, and you doing this and you trying to reemerge? And it looks as if he is, cause they're trying to see who's gonna run. And he looks as if he's gonna run again. What's your thoughts on him running in twenty twenty-four? One second, Nick. Um, listening audience, I wanna hear your, um, your guys' thoughts on this. You could call in five one five six zero two nine six six seven, or go ahead and type it in and I will definitely, look, read your comment live. All right, go ahead, Nick. What's your thoughts on him running for twenty twenty-four?
Uh, my thought is, please stay in New York, hurry up and charge this man and throw him in jail. Period. No, and you know what? Twenty twenty-four, if he does run again with it, which he, he was promising, this, it's gonna be a fight. It's literally gonna be a fight and I really think this is where the United States is really gonna get divided. It's gonna be ugly in twenty twenty-four. So New York State, please do your thing, get these charges down. Put this man in jail. We don't need Orange Fooliest running nothing. I wouldn't even let him run a local convenience store right about now. Nothing.
What, you said not even a, a convenience store? He's losing a lot of money at his hotels. Um, well, they have a statue of the former US President Donald Trump, which is pictured and I'll put it up on the website, shop talk with Mel dot com. At the, uh, Conservative Politician Act, at the CPAC. And for those who don't know what it stands for, it's Conservative Political Action Conference, which is happening in Orlando, Florida. All right, so they got like a gold face. So you're talking about Orange Julius. They done made a gold statue of this man. They praise this guy.
So they're praising this. He was a jackass. I'm sorry. Uh, uh, he, he didn't know what he was doing. He ran this country like.
Why did they invite him to speak? The last time he spoke, we already know that, what happened on the sixth. Hey, he was acquitted for that, so they didn't, they felt as though that he didn't start a riot. I still do believe that he did, because he, he had not meant for his words, then they probably wouldn't have done all of that. The one officer who was actually killed, there was another Capitol, um, officer and he said that the one that was caught on camera, Officer Dunn, the one that they gave the award to, he said it was a ton of Officer Duns out there. It was a ton of them that were out there. They just weren't, it wasn't seen on, it wasn't caught on a camera. Um, and he showed where he was standing there and he was like the second tier officer. He said the other ones, he said, you saw, you know, smoke bombs, you saw everything. He said the problem, he said he was afraid. This guy was six, six, seven. And he said he was up, he said, I'm gonna be honest with you. I was afraid. He said, um, when they were briefed, he said there are two ways we're going off. When they were briefed, they said, go get helmets. He said, so he knew something was gonna go on. He said that day started as a normal workday. And he knew that something was gonna go on when they said, get the helmets. He said he just did not expect it to be that way. He said, I was afraid. He said, I'm gonna be honest, I was afraid. He said, because they came and they were prepared. He said they had on, on, they had, he's getting hurt gunfire. He said they were ready. He said they were, this guy, he said, um, I can't remember what show I was watching. He was saying that, um, that they had gunfire, they were ready to assassinate the Vice President. So here's somebody on the inside that's talking about this situation and how it affected him. So you know PTSD, um, is settling in with most of those officers. One of those officers, I believe, committed suicide. Um, and it's like, oh, yeah, mm-hmm, and that was like right after. This officer said at the Capitol riot. He said, this is what got him. He said there were people out there and they had the blue stripes as far as like Blue Lives Matter. He said there were people showing them saying, sir, this is for you too. He said they were showing their badges. They were showing their badges. Yes, he said it was a lot of police officers there as well. And he said, and if they were doing that for us, why were they fighting us?
Exactly, but yet and still, they chose not to impeach this fool. I, it's like all of that going on and they chose not to impeach him, allowing him to possibly run again. That's why I'm, listen, if, if, in the state of New York, if anybody that got anything to do with putting, bringing forth any charges of, of, on that man, please hurry up, do what you gotta do. Put him in jail. He needs to be held accountable. Because if he's, if they see that he's held accountable, then it might calm some of this other stuff down, because if they're gonna let him go, just imagine that some of the other stuff that people are gonna start doing, like, you know, because they relax with him. Who is, he is not God. He is not inferior. Why are you holding this man on a pedestal?
Right.
I don't understand that. To me, and I'm sorry, this is my views and they don't, it's not the views of anyone else on, on the show. He is no better than dog on dirt or a piece of gum on the bottom of your shoe. That's to me, I don't care how much money he has, who he is, how many businesses he has. It's his whole entire demeanor. He is a closet racist. I don't care what you say. You know, the only reason he, like, on his, he did employ some black people or like on the celebrity and everything else was just, this man had a plan in the beginning. He is not, he, he is the devil, period, the devil. The devil in, in the flesh. That's to me, my opinion. He is the devil in the flesh and they just letting it go on like, oh, well.
Okay, let me say this. The first time Harry Dunn stepped inside the US Capitol also happened to be his first day as a Capitol Police Officer.
Oh, my goodness.
And he said the rotunda, you just look up, these are his words, you just look up and it just goes up forever. It's just an amazing architectural building, ar- architectural building. Um, that's what he told, it was ABC News, that's what I was watching. And he said it's just hard to not be in awe when you saw it. And now it's just like demolished from the incident that happened January the sixth. And he said, um, when he looked up, he said now he continues to see clouds of smoke, fire extinguishers going off. And he said, that's what he just remembers. He remembers, uh, walking into the room soon after fighting off a mob of angry rioters. He called them terrorists. He said, there were no bugs. He said, this was well beyond bugs. He said, these were terrorists and they came ready to fight. Go ahead, Nick.
But yet and still, if he had fired a weapon on any of them, then he would be fired. He would lose his job. That's the funny thing. He would lose his job because he was trying to save the Capitol and save himself and, you know, save the, the political party, those that were there doing meetings and everything. He would have been fired. But he, that's just, that's crazy. But yeah, I, that's why, there's just certain professions I know I can't, cause I'm telling you, yeah, there would have been a bunch of them laid down.
But here's the thing, if they were ready and you had that many people there. They were armed and ready.
Right.
I'm gonna tell you, your little gun meant absolutely nothing. Because if you would have fired, they would have fired back. They would have fired back. So you have to choose your battles. And looking at that in the photos that were shown on ABC News. It was very different from what, you know, they tried to downplay it. So you've got these thousands of people and you got a gun, talk about pop, pop, pop. You're gone. You're gone. It would have been, it would have been more than just that particular officer.
And the thing that kills me is all the Trumpsters are still saying it was a peaceful protest. It wasn't like the BLM. Oh, you lie. You lie.
So we're still, we're still dealing with this whole.
Dealing with that still. And they still trying to compare it. There was no comparison. You purposely went with intention on harming people. Be a BLM is just a movement. And it is just supposed to be peaceful. You have some that are going to be radical. And then you also have some. People from other parties that's coming in just to purposely do things knowing it's gonna be blamed. On BLM, but you guys just purposely went with intent to harm, to kill. To just, and yeah, but it's, they still wanna compare it and they still wanna downplay it and it was peaceful. What was peaceful about people dying? And about, yeah, I don't understand that. How was that peaceful?
It wasn't.
It wasn't. And these are the same people that had a problem with Colin Kaepernick. Kneeling.
And he still doesn't have a job. Let's do this commercial break really, really fast. Um. Lace, every girl loves lace. I have on a lace sheer top. So lace is in. Lovely ladies, get yourself some lace. Uh, if you want to find your lovely lace. Please shop Five Grants Boutique, one sixty four High Street Northeast, Warren, Ohio. Four, 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 eight, one. You can order online, visit their website at. Five, the number five, Grants with a S boutique dot com. And they also have afterpay in case you lovely people don't know. Now, if you want more information on Five Grants Boutique. You can call them at three, three, zero, three, nine, four, five, thousand. Again, three, three, zero, three, nine, four, five, thousand. Every girl loves lace. Alright. Let's, let's go back, Nick, to what we were talking about. Colin Kaepernick. How come nobody's offered him a job yet?
Exactly.
What, what's your, what's your thoughts like? Let, let's dig a little deeper. Why do you think they didn't offer him a job?
And I hate to bring it up, but.
Go ahead.
Everything still goes back to the color of your skin.
Well, after the Black Lives Matter movement came and then now, okay, you're acknowledging that there's an issue. Racial injustices. Offer him, because you know he's still got it.
Exactly.
He, he still has it. So I, I can't understand why they won't just go ahead and, um.
And offer him the job. But yeah, that's what I'm saying. But. The, a lot of the people that had a problem with him kneeling during games. Are the same ones who stormed the Capitol. Somebody help me to understand that logic.
Listening audience, please let us know. I, I, you know, let us know your thoughts on that. Um, even. Like, if you want to, I think if you want to. Well, we all want to stop the racial injustices. But if you want to give an apology, you have people that's actually giving apologies, you're speaking words, but we don't see any action. Why not offer him a job? Because that's the issue as to why they blackballed him. Because a lot of people don't understand. Let me, let me say this. He played for the, um. San Francisco Forty Niners. And then he was an independent, he was independent. So it wasn't as if he was playing for that team and then they just fired him because of this. No, 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 no. He was independent, but I think he, he still has it. He still has it. So no one was looking at him and they blackballed him because he took a knee. You know. What, like, what are we saying to the people? We had other people that took, took a knee as well, but they figured he was, he was the one that started it. So the face. And I commend him and I thank him for that. He was bringing awareness. Why are you that upset? About this man who is respectfully, and I want to say Jim Brown is the one, don't quote me on it. Jim Brown is the one that told him that's the highest honor is to kneel. So you're upset that I took a knee. That's peaceful. That's peaceful. And wasn't it, what did Trump say about, uh? So he called all the, all the mothers of the people that took a knee bees, sons of bees. Where are we going? Like. That's the question that we have to ask.
Right, they're blackballing him for peacefully taking a knee. But then they're allowing someone who caused a riot in the Capitol to possibly run again.
And here, here's what's really interesting. Let's look, let's look at this. Remember they were saying President Obama was the Antichrist?
Yeah.
And let's look at the big picture. Now you know, like I said, when he went across the street, forty five went across the street and took the photo. And he gonna call in the National Guard to walk him across the street to take a photo in front of a church with a Bible. The Bible was upside down. Like the cameraman know he saw that. The shade, like, uh, you might wanna turn that and fix the Bible the correct way.
The Antichrist right there.
Okay, and without me saying anything. And why is it? Let, let's look at this. Why did taking a knee, why did kneeling? You want to be the king? Why did kneeling make you so angry?
Exactly, because you know we kneel to pray.
It made you so, it made you that angry that you're like, done, I'm out of here. You can make all the noise in the world, but when you are quiet and peaceful and kneeling. You make someone that angry? Is it the silence? Because you don't know what people are thinking? Go ahead, Nick. What you think?
Probably, I mean, yeah, that's just, I, I'm, I'm still, I don't, I don't understand it. I really don't.
Let's, let's bring it home. Let's, let's bring it home. If you're at the job and you have bosses like that, that if they just attack you or they find somebody to pick on. And you say nothing, they get more angry.
Yes, they do, because they want you to react so they can have a, so they can say they had a valid reason to get rid of you.
Okay, now, but they can't get rid of you if you say nothing.
Exactly. So that's, that's the problem.
I'm, I'm going to the viewers real quick. Thanks Theo for letting me know. He said Kaepernick was stuck under a contract with the Forty Niners through twenty twenty. I gotta, I gotta read, I, I, I gotta read that. I, I have to read it to that. I'm gonna check it to it. Go ahead, caller, you're on live with shop talk. Hello? Okay, when you ready to talk, we'll put you back on. I don't want to say the phone, like, I'm like, I won't say the phone number at all. Uh, the phone number here, if you want in on this conversation is five, one, five, six, zero, two, nine, six. Six, seven. Again, five, one, five, six, zero, two, nine, six, six, seven. Feel free to call in and voice your opinion live, okay? Alright, Nick, so you said that they can't find a reason to terminate you by you not saying anything.
Right.
I, I just think it's mighty odd. I, I really do. I think it's mighty odd that. Someone is that, will become that angry for you not saying anything. I, I, I just.
Yeah, that's to me, an inferior complex, I guess. I don't know.
That's exactly what it is. Go ahead, caller, you're on live with shop talk. Okay, when they decide to, look, when they decide to talk, we'll get that caller as well. Five, one, five, six, zero, two, nine, six, six, seven. So you said inferior. Complex.
Yes. Some, some, it, it, some just have that complex. I don't know if it was. A traumatic experience that they grew up with, like being picked on. And so now you're in a position. Where you can, you know, do this. It, 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 a lot of it has with some people. It has something to do with that, especially with the, with our fine officers in the booth. You have some of those. Were picked on and bullied in school. And now they are in a position to, you know, of authority. So yeah, that's another reason why we have a lot of police brutality. Yeah, so inferior complex. That's to me.
Okay, I see you're going in and out.
You're.
There you go. Now, now you're good. Now you're good. Okay, I, um, I wanna, um. I want to check into that contract, because I thought he was independent. I'm so, um. I'm so confused as far as like, uh. Did you, okay, Colin Kaepernick. Let's see, on April ninth, twenty twenty. Okay, Fox eight, they published an article reporting that the New York Jets Football Club had agreed on a one year. That million dollar contract with Colin Cap- Kaepernick. Kaepernick is what we know, we call him Cap. And they calling him a controversial NFL quarterback. Best known for sparking the practice of kneeling during the National Anthem to protest.
How is that controversial?
Protest racial injustices in the United States. Go ahead.
I mean, how is that controversial then? Because then you turn around and you have people storming the Capitol. But they were peaceful.
Houseway. Like, how, how does that work?
Yeah, I don't understand.
Would you say, I don't understand. The phone number here is five, one, five, six, zero, two, nine, six, six, seven. Okay, five, one, five, six, zero, two, nine, six, six, seven. Call in, talk to us. Me and Nick, we doing it. Look, I'm like, we doing it. You said now how, I mean. I, I don't know. We gotta ask way.
Yeah, we gotta find a square, ask for, house way, I don't understand that. They call him controversial because he kneels during the National Anthem, but we had. Thugs, terrorists and everything else who actually stormed the Capitol. But there, yeah, really, like.
Now, now tell me, do you think that they would, let me put it this way, would it have been? Notice or more profound had they stayed in the locker room and not kneeled? For the flag. And I'm speaking on.
Probably not. Probably not. If they'd have just stayed in the locker room, I don't think it would have been a big of an issue. You know, people probably would have just thought, oh, maybe, you know, whatever. I don't think they would have missed them whatsoever until afterwards. But yeah, the fact that they outright kneeled and the fact that, you know, the media. You know, the media, we gonna bring attention to things. And so, yeah. Um, but still, to me, if it was peaceful, he wasn't causing any issues, he doesn't cause any issues in his outside life. I mean, so what, what's the problem? What's the problem?
Yeah, we said, what's the problem? The problem is that they don't, they want to keep people asleep. You know how they say, stay woke? How, how can you stay woke if? You never woke up.
Right. These folks been sleeping. Still sleeping. Staying asleep. Some of them just want to stay asleep. They don't want to wake up. They don't want to realize a lot of this stuff, so. My hat's off to you. You just living in your own little world and your own little bubble. Okay. Somebody gonna come along one of these days with a pen and pop it though. I'm just saying.
Alright, let's, let's talk about the school system. Now I had a bunch of, um. A bunch of questions on the school systems, you know, in our urban areas. So we're, we're talking about the racial injustices. I want to actually talk about the injustices within the urban area. Um, where actually the state, the state takes takeover. You know, and in our area, um, because you have. Who's in fiscal emergency? Lorraine, Cleveland. Excuse me, and the Youngstown area. And people are wondering, we vote on the people that we want to represent. You know, our children in the school system, we vote on, vote on them. Was it every three, four years? I can't even remember. Five years, I want to say. What's gonna happen to our vote? What's gonna happen to the people? What are the people gonna say? You know what I mean? Like, who's, who's gonna listen to the people if clearly? We can't, you know, our own turn on our own, even with Colin, because it was, there's a lot of black people that felt like, well, why did he do that? Hello, he's fighting for you. Same scenario as the Harry Dunn situation where. He was saying that there were people showing him badges on the January sixth incident, the riot, the Capitol riot, call it what it is.
Right.
So he said that they're doing it for us. Okay, well, we're fighting for all of us as a whole. And we're not on each other's side. We, we're not on each other's side. Now, there were those and I want to go to the listening audience too. Let's, we, we can talk about it. And I'll present it, you know, to our board who is not. Acting. I'll put it this way, with our area, people want to know, why is there still a school board?
Right, exactly.
Go ahead. Because I, I want to know.
Yeah, I, I'm like, I'm not understanding how they want us to continue to vote on the school board, but then they are taking over. So it's like, our vote is wasted. It's wasted.
I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that.
So like, we need to do something about that because. We are consistently voting on who we want to put in the school board. But yet and still, the state is taking over. What is the sense of having us vote then?
That, that's a good question. Um, we have on the line the school board president. Ron, Ronald Chad. And we have a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions that, um, are here. And I know you don't speak for the rain or Cleveland schools, but in the urban, urban areas, the, um. It's like we don't have a voice, just like Nick said. Did you?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear all of her comments, but what, what I can say is that, um, the, the structure of the ADC CEO model is. One where they have total operational managerial control over the district. What happens is the academic, economic, the, not economic, I'm sorry. Academic Distress Commission, they, uh, select the CEO and then he has that, he or she has that power. Um, the, with the, with the local school board, they, they do have some influence on things. Uh, associated with tax abatements, levies, property and that sort of thing. But, um, the main.
Okay, wait. So. If I'm taking over the school district, I'm, I'm working for the state. I just want to get clarity. Um, if I'm working for the state and I'm taking over the school district. I will want to keep my school board intact so that I can get a levy pass to get more money. Help. Is, is that, is that true or false?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's one of the things you have, you have to have a school in Ohio. In order to, in order to enact, um, taxation. You, it must come from an elected board, or, or elected body, I should say. So that's the state, like, an individual can't go out and say, hey, give me this money. You know what I mean? So it has to be. The, you know, that's, that's one of the caveats. That was, this law was so sloppily and quickly put together that there's a lot of, uh, holes in it. There's a lot of things where people don't understand, um, where, where things have to be almost sorted out through either agreement or let, or, um. Or, or legal pursuit to understand what should be, uh, happening.
Okay, let me ask you. Okay, let me ask you this question from the people. Let Nick the voice, but let me ask you this one. Um. What happened to? Our money like, and I'm gonna say our money because we know like with those levies that we pass and we pass and. I know you can't speak for what's happening in Cleveland and Lorraine, but I'm just going on this. Where the state took over because this is a limited, you know, we don't have that much time on it though.
Yeah, but let's, let's um, let's.
Person, then I'll I'll definitely let you speak.
Okay.
The, the monies prior to the state takeover, how much was that?
Uh, I think I know what you're talking about. Uh, before before the CEO ABC model, the district had twenty four million dollars in surplus. Um, established.
Okay.
After the first two to three years of the first CEO, that um, that surplus was actually diminished.
Okay, so twenty four millions. See, that.
Yeah, like twenty, like twenty three point something million, I can't remember.
Hey, you might as well round up when you.
It might as be twenty four, yeah.
Okay, um, because I will go to those meetings and I'm looking at that and we're saying yes to the levy, yes to the levy. This is our money that is coming out of our checks so that our children can have what they need to study with. There is no books in the school. They're talking about something, they don't have books, they'll just just run copies. And I understand that y'all get the brunt of everything. But I'm looking at twenty four million and then the state takes over and then once the state take over. And then you want more money, but you just took twenty four million.
Well, well, the the levy, the levy is in itself. The levy is one of those things where like that's, well, first of all, yeah, look at Ohio. It's been deemed by the Ohio Supreme Court that the way school districts are funded is unconstitutional. Because of, you're you're basically uh, funding districts based off the property of that community. So if I'm in a underserved community, property right, um, property taxes won't be that high, no no sort of things. Then that's gonna cause a a little, that's gonna cause a level of discrepancy with funding. The the piece there though, based on the system, that portion of funding is sort of like the community's. Um. Portion to pay, if you will, you know. But the 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 problem is, is when you have money, when you. When you, okay, you have, whenever you manage, you can manage, you have two, you can manage in two ways. You can do, you can mismanage or you can manage well. And and what we saw was a a. Management in a way that couldn't be sustainable. And that's the important thing. When you get monies, like, how do I sustain? When I say sustainable, if I put all the, if I bring in all these programs or I make all these purchases, how do I sustain that over time? And without a, without a financial plan that that's integrated into your academic approach, you're gonna find yourself in these kind of situations.
Okay. Well, we don't wanna be in that situation.
No one does. Cuz we.
Go ahead.
No, because the district in two thousand seven had a um, fiscal emergency. I believe it's two thousand seven or ten. Before my years on the board. And um. Around that time, that issue was fixed. And one of those fixes was to right-size the school district based off of the amount of of students you have. So one thing we saw early on was that there was this approach to try to lose people through attrition. And not hire certain positions if you didn't need them. Then once HB seventy hit, which is the legislation that had an ADC and a CEO. That is when we seen an explosion in executive positions that shifted that balance. So we might have staff at a executive level that you wouldn't see at a school that had. Like, for example, we should be servicing maybe eleven thousand students. We roughly service a little bit over five hu- five, five thousand. So you go from eleven thousand to five thousand, but you build up staff as if you're serving eleven thousand. You know what I mean? And that and that's what we see here. So when we talk about how funds could be used in a more robust way to increase instruction. The CEOs seem to think that the best way to to fix a problem in the classroom is to add executive positions. Which I I I've never understood that.
Okay, um, we're gonna go to the viewer, um, to a viewer, but adding. Okay, so adding another body and you're putting somebody else on payroll is the answer, but you're not giving anybody books. That's what I have to say.
Well, well, the thing is, is uh, the board back in two thousand, I think it was sixteen or seventeen. We did, uh, cuz what they need to understand is that they, that. The state had control over academics from two thousand ten until, till, till now, present day.
In the Youngstown.
So, yeah, so during that time, during that time, the the State Academic Distress Commission. Felt that it was best to have books as a resource in the classroom versus as, well, we traditionally would take home books in the past. Um, some, some, also came along with that was that there was some issues with. The way they want to structure things, things were that there was a, there were, there was less homework ta- taken home. From whatever information they received, they felt that the more homework that you sit home, the less likely it was to come back and that will put a child at a deficit. So I'm just, I'm just telling you what.
And I'm not coming down on you. Coming on this show. But um, how can somebody judge? Everybody is not gonna be. Um, that parent, just like they were doing with those, what are those things called? The computers that they were sending home? People were worried about it. I remember, Nick, you were saying that some people were pawning them. But if you, if you take that and. Go with that and say, okay, well, they might pawn it, so I'm not gonna send it to the person. I think that's foul. Let me go to the viewer. Let me go to the viewer real quick, cuz this was a question for you. What, cuz I don't want, the reason I'm doing this show, cuz I don't want other people to deal with what is happening in this area. Uh, this person is out of Cleveland.
Yes.
This is a question. What if the state fails to turn the school system around? That's one. What timeframe are they being given to fix these sys- these systemic school failures?
They, they are given a perpetual time limit of whatever they deem fit to to walk away. So so let let me say this. This is the one thing. If you're under, if you're in this situation, so Cleveland, Cleveland in itself. And this is what I would say earlier, Cleveland in itself is a completely different animal, right? Cleveland, Cleveland has the bones of what HB seventy is, right? They have a CEO, they have a mayor. That appointed that person and all that other stuff, right? But they also tied their thing into like a super levy that they had. So this was all tied in this levy to like bring in more money to the district. But I don't see. To me, I really felt like the people of Cleveland were kind of misled on what they were voting for. Cuz what they voted for was to give away their rights to have any influence on their school district. And 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 the only way they can have a a shift in that is however they persuade their mayor to be, to impact that system. Do you see what I'm saying? Cuz cuz they they voted to have this prior to it being the thing that they had to have.
Oh, okay.
So so there was pressure by by then Governor Kasich for this change. And so everybody else was like, yeah, we don't think this is right. And Cleveland's leadership got together and was like, well, we are gonna do this. And it was pretty much HB seventy. Um, with with the support of the community, thinking they were passing a levy to improve the school, but they actually restructured their whole. Uh, as they they restructured their whole leadership. Uh, portion for for their edu- for, they restructured leadership for their um, for their educational institution. And I don't know if they truly understood what they were, what it was gonna happen.
Okay, so they don't have a school district? Do you know?
No, they have a school district.
Not a school, I apologize. A school board? They don't have a board?
They, I believe their school, their school board was appointed by the by the mayor.
Okay, where?
So it's not, so, I mean, when you have appointments like anywhere else, I'm not trying to say that those are bad selections, cuz I I don't know the folks.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, is that when you have those appointments. You you have the people that 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 leader put in place versus the versus people in the community. Say, hey, I have great ideas, I have great energy, I would like to do this work too. So if you're not in that, if you're not an appointment, you can't get elected. You know what I'm saying? So.
Okay, so that's what Nick was talking about.
Yeah.
She was pretty much like, okay, so her voice isn't heard. If we can't vote on the people that we want and in the Youngstown area.
Well, yeah.
It's like, so everybody who voted, is our voice not being heard?
Well, the thing is, is that because of, because of our our current mayor. He recognized what the disenfranchisement that was happening with the school district and everything and everything like that. And um, we were able to work with him to um. To have a, pretty much, I will, I'll, I'll use these terms, a moratorium on replacement of. That board to a, to a mayor, mayoral appointed board because of how the legislation was rolled out in Youngstown. So we, we had an argument that these amount of years didn't hap- didn't pass. So when I say that, this is what viewers need to understand. Is that when you have, okay, when you have this state control mechanism that happens. The school board has no managerial operational control over the district for the most part, right? It like, let's say if it went to, if it was a hundred percent to begin with, now it's like maybe five to three percent right now. The, so what happens is, is that. When the, when the district is under the CEO's control for four years, four years when it's under his control, I don't know if you see my fingers or not.
Yeah, I believe.
But, four years of his control, if it fails, if it continues to fail under his control, he is not replaced. The elected school board is is replaced with an appointed board. That, and it's like, well, why would you remove the people who had no control over the situation? Right? And a Youngstown is even more so because the state has had control over academics since two thousand ten. So, everybody that's a board member now was a board member elected after state control. So how can you hold these people accountable for the state's inability to be able to fix the problem pretty much that they created?
Okay, yeah, I got, uh, look, I got something to add to that. Uh, let's go to the viewers. Um, yes, there is a board. But they answer to the CEO that is in place, it seems like.
No, that that.
This is, this is an opinion of.
Oh, is that, is that an opinion or a question?
It is, it's, actually, it's an opinion because he answered, this is from, this guy's from Cleveland. He said, yes, there is a board, but they answer to the CEO that is in place, it seems like.
Okay, but, yeah, and and the thing is, is that that's fundamentally flawed in itself. How can you have a body that's supposed to govern over institution? And yet that institution, the the people who who govern over that institution have to get their marching orders from the CEO. That, you see what I'm saying? Like, like if you, so if you have a Fortune five hundred company. If you have any institution that has a board over it, the those people are accountable to the constituents, stakeholders. Um, you know, um, uh, whom whoever, whoever they are. And that CEO traditionally works for them. So for example, just like when you see.
So wait, so the CEO works for?
I'm just talking, I'm just talking about in the, in the, in the, Cleveland situation is different.
Well, yeah, I got it, but I'm just.
But but I'm just saying, like, overall, if you look at any CEO that's in any, that's over any company, over anything. That CEO or president reports to that board, to that governing board. You you don't have a CEO, you don't have a governing board that reports to a CEO. So that's happening in Cleveland. That's fundamentally flawed, flawed in itself.
Okay, okay. Now, you have, the board has been, uh, we've been under state control for how long?
Ten years, going on eleven.
And you'll have people that will continue to blame the board.
Yeah.
What's happening? And I did see where the previous CEO, he had made a post which really hurt my heart. Because that, he said he was gonna put that F on the refrigerator.
Yeah, on his refrigerator.
On state, you know, under state control, we still, in the Youngstown area, still received a F on a report card. And when he said he was gonna put that F on his refrigerator, I'm like, that's not funny.
Well, the, well, the thing, the thing with him was, was that he was, what people need to understand is that there's a different, okay. The school district wasn't doing well before, but it was improving. There was a joint effort between the ADC. And the Board of Education to do some things to improve. Academic Distress Commission. At that time, it was the Academic Distress Commission. Then the CEO came in, who was appointed by the Academic Distress Commission. So what we saw, what we see in Youngstown, and I and I use present tense, is that. Under state, under a CEO model, we have gotten worse consecutively, progressively. Over that time of that, of that being put in place. So, for example, in Youngstown, for. When, before the CEO came in for third grade literacy, we had a B. We had a B, we had a better score than like Boardman and some of the other suburbs. We had a B. When he came in.
A B, as in better.
A B as in better, better, best, bestest, you know, asbestos, right? But, but the point I'm saying is, uh, we had a B. And then after he came in. He removed certain things from the program and now that program is is not received. They changed how it's measured and so. Basically, it's, it was like fifteen point seven percent, but it is, it's really a F, right? It's it's it dropped off that much. And that was because things were removed. But what happened was, every year, under that leadership, it dropped off more and more and more.
Go ahead, Nick. Any questions for a school board president?
Um.
Just watching this situation.
Yeah, are we, um. Like, as far as the state takeover, how long? Is this expected to last?
Well, um, there's, there's. Two ways out. One, the first way out is that there's been a level of improvement over a few years. It shows. The the, I think, is a C or a C or better. And the reason why I'm following you on this is because there's legislation and that's the second way. So if if the school district shows that it's improving, then the legislation ends. You know, based off the parameters they may have in place at that particular time, cuz those things are forever changing. The other play, the other uh, way is for legislation. And what we've been a partner, what we, what we've been a partner with many. Uh, with bipartisan um, leadership at the state level. With um, with with the Senate and the House of Representatives to bring about legislation that would end this. So it's more likely at this time that with, with everything happening with COVID. That there would probably be a likelihood for legislation that would come in to help repair our districts versus um. The performance of students. And when I say the performance of students, what people need to understand is, under the current state of things. Um, testing isn't being, isn't being uh, used as a measure of success or failure that district at this point in time. Because of the pandemic.
Okay. Now, uh, Nick, I don't know if you were gonna ask this question, but this was my question after. You said, how long is it going to be? Um, you know, the state takeover. Now, tell me if I am correct. Uh, Mr. Chad, when I paraphrase this. So if the CEO is out, you said for consecutive years, I wanna make sure I got clarity. Doing bad and, you know, still failing. Then the, not the school board, not the people that we voted on will be taking over. It will be who the mayor chooses. To take over, correct or not correct?
You're correct. But the, but those, those, what needs to be identified is that. Those people that the mayor chooses from are people that are selected by the CEO. So so let's say the CEO.
So he's still in control. Well, it's not the mayor, it's the CEO, so he's still in control. Am I, am I crazy? Like, help me.
So so what, so what happens is, is that, cuz we, we almost went through this process here. So so uh, what happens is. Is that you get um, a pool of people, maybe like, let's say ten or twenty, right? That that he, like, I don't, however, however many people he get, he gets. And then he gives the mayor. Okay, here's your selection. Select from these people.
Okay, okay. All right. Nick, help me out. The voice of the people. So, if the CEO does bad, the CEO appoints other people to take over if he's out.
No, 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 no. He's not, he's not, he's not appointing them to take his place. He's appointing them to take the elected school board's place.
That's my point. So it's still running it. I'm like.
Well, the thing, the thing is, is that if you hand, if you handpick your own people. Do you think those people are gonna go against you? That that's, that's the thing. Are they gonna, are they gonna advocate for the, for the betterment of the, of the community? Or are they gonna say, we think what you're doing is fine regardless of the outcome?
Okay, okay.
You know, that's the question.
Right. Not, not as, what, my analogy is not as important as what's going on in education, let's just be clear. But in my house, oh, we play space, and we for real about space. So if I gotta get up and go to the bathroom, I should be, okay, boom, all right, you outta here. I appoint somebody to play my hand. I expect them to win.
Right.
I expect them to play like me. So of course, it, get rid of the other people that the, that the people, the people, rest in peace, OT. The people decide. So everyone's voices in the community means absolutely nothing. That's what it sounds like, means absolutely nothing.
Yeah.
So get outta here with your vote, your vote does not count, even though raise your vote does count. Right. Going to appoint these people, since I couldn't get the job done, I'm gonna call my cousins up on the phone and be like, hey, I need y'all to do A, B, C, and D. Since you getting, since you have these people. And I just paraphrased in my way for the people.
I mean, I mean, that could, that could be a, a problem, because when you have people that choose people, it's pretty random. Like, you, you earn the respect of your community for them to pick you.
That's not a lie, it's to me, but go ahead.
Yeah, but, but in, in this particular case, this is why this legislation is flawed. But what people also need to realize is that the CEO can say, hey, these particular things are not happening. So you know what? I think it would be better if Austin, I'm just using, like, if the suburb to the west took all the west side schools over. And you know what? Let's let the suburb to the north take over all those schools. Like, they have that kind of power. Like, to take away the property that our citizens paid for and give it to a, another school district or, or a for-profit business to do whatever they wish. You know, I mean, well, to do whatever they wish under hospice, uh, under the, um, focus of education. But what I'm saying is, is that that relinquishes the control of our, of our education system to other entities that are not us. So who wants to have their taxpayer dollars go to a community that they don't, that they don't live in?
True.
Well, you know, if you, you know, so.
One of the viewers said, um, Phil, that's one of the viewers.
And, and then what happens when you have, uh, education system in a, in a place that has been dismantled because it's been given away? What are you left with after that? What's your educational institution for your community after it's been divvied up? And we've seen the effects of charter schools in our, in our community, because we have folks, I mean, we have students that go to charter schools, and those charter schools haven't performed better than the Souths East District, School District. Only one has, has, has done so. Uh, the, the rest have not. Uh, the, the issue would be this, though.
Do you know of one?
Um, it's, uh, it's, um, it used to be Stanbar Elementary School. I don't know, what is it called now, on the west side over on Hazelwood?
Stanbar Charter.
Stanbar Charter, yeah.
Just one charter school that's.
That's one, yeah. And then you have other schools that, and, and what people also need to realize is that don't be sold on the lie of, of voucher system that's fair, because it is not fair and is not equitable. What happens is, is that people think like, well, I'll just take my kid and go to this place or that place, right?
That's what that open enrollment?
Open enrollment, open enrollment. So what happens is those school districts, they pick and choose what students they wanna take. So I've, I've know, I know students that's been, that have been rejected from other schools, you know, for, oh, they, they, they scored a C, or we don't know if we, we can handle.
Can I ask a question, and I hope you have the answer to it? I've seen where people did the open enrollment, they got the voucher.
Mm-hmm.
And they'll take them and then they'll kick them out.
Yes.
There money's involved, help, help me with that.
There is money's involved. There is money involved, and that's, and that's what I'm saying, is that like, we, is these stories like this that no one knows about. So what she, what, what Mel is talking about is this. Before the state was structured to where, how, how funding was delivered to the schools. So it was like after, like, maybe I think it was like late November or something like that, if your child went to school that long, then the school district would get paid for your child for the entire year, right? And so what was happening was you would have this mess.
Do you know about how much that's about?
Um, I would, I would say about seven grand.
Seven thousand dollars a student.
I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm just, yeah.
You know, you know, I gotta put this out here, you know, some, it, it's like after that winter break, then I hear that their child is kicked out, like, be, you know, it's like during that winter break, they don't go back the following year. I'm like, well, wait a minute, well, what happened? But they've already received that seven thousand dollars.
They, 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 that's, that's how it used to be. So they, they would get that funding at a certain point. And it wasn't like at the completion of the year, it was at like a, I thought it was for, before Christmas break or whatever, but it was around that time.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so, so. So, um, so they were able, they would remove those children, they would get the funding and remove them. So when the state became aware of this, and so now they changed the strategy to where there's a certain time period over, over time. So let's say.
Oh, half, half, half a payment or so?
Well, yeah, like something of that nature, right? You were, you would have to have so many, so many days in that district in order to get complete full funding. So, so that, that's one thing, you know, and then the, the other thing that people, uh, need to realize is that some schools, like, and I will say this, Austintown, they, they, they had a big issue where they wanted to get rid of their superintendent because of open enrollment. Now, the reason he had open enrollment was because Austintown citizens will not pass a tax levy for their district. So he's like, well, how am I supposed to fund this if they won't take responsibility and fund their own district?
Okay.
Right? And so you had, like, there was really like two sects in Aust- when S E C T.
Do that on this show.
When it, when it came, when it came to education, because some were like, like, they hated on his guy, like, they didn't want, they didn't want their superintendent, right? Because of how they felt about his position on open enrollment. And so they hated on him so bad, when he got another job, they, I don't know why they did this, but, but most ridiculous thing ever. You don't want the guy. He goes, he's, he's about to get a job in, in Mentor, right? This is in the paper. And they went up there and raised so much cane on him up there, that the mi- that Mentor decided not to hire him. So what do you, what do you think happened? He came back to Austintown because his contract wasn't enough. So he was trying to leave.
So they should have just won a lot of money.
Let him go, right? But they, but they wanted to kill this, they wanted to kill, steal, and destroy you instead of just letting him go, right?
And then they had to. With him back.
But he, yeah, because his contract wasn't up. So, you know, but, but the thing is, they, he was in a, he was in a paper, local paper, where he made a quote about, well, he wanted, he, he brought, he had open enrollment to bring in those money, tho- those dollars. Never, he never said, hey, we have open enrollment because we are the best place to educate kids. And if kids need a good education, they could come here and get it regardless of where they live, right? That wasn't his stance. His stance was those black and brown faces and those white faces that live in Youngstown, they can come over here and we can take that money to keep our school district afloat versus the.
The financial gain. See, that's the stuff that ticks.
Yeah.
Off. So it's not even really about the education. It's like, okay, here, you can get educated, and you hear if you want to.
Well, I think, I think the thing is, is that, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying those children aren't striving, or, or they're not doing what they were gonna do. They're probably gonna be great students anywhere. You know what I mean? The, the problem is, is that what's the intent of someone letting you in? That's, you know what I mean? Like, and, and in that article, he showed me that his intent was not to say we are the best place to educate students and we'll take, we'll take everybody. We're, we're the statue.
The attention, the dollars. Um, for those, for the viewers and the listeners who are just tuning in, I have school board president, Ronald Shad, um, can you give a background of yourself as far as like your educational background, if you will?
Um, I have a, an undergraduate degree from, uh, Till College and a master's, uh, from Y S U. I've been, um, oh, I'm like, I'm just like the bread, baby. You know, what is it? Uh, home, 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 what is it?
Homegrown.
No, how does the bread, how does Swable say it? What does they say?
No, homegrown. I just know home. Is it?
Homegrown, home bread, right? Something like that. I can't remember. Damn, yeah. But anyway, yeah.
You just like the Swable's bread. Yeah, straight from this area.
Yeah, you know what I mean? So, I mean, that's the thing is like, you know, um, my, my vest, my vested interest in this is because I am a part of Youngstown, just like anybody else. My family has been here for, my, my, my paternal side has been here for three generations. My, my, I'm sorry. My, my, my mother's paternal side has been here for, for three generations. Her, uh, maternal side has been here, I don't know, they might have, they might have been here when they, um, for, forever, you know, uh, but, uh, yeah.
We gonna find.
Vested interest, vested interest. And the thing is, one misconception I wanna clean up real quick, Mel, is that people think the Board of Education, they like, they only do it for the money, they only do it for the money.
Y'all make, um, I know, it's public knowledge.
Yeah, it's public knowledge, but let's, let's.
How much does a board member make?
A board member, a board member makes a whopping one hundred twenty-five dollars a meeting, which is about three thousand dollars a year.
Three thousand dollars a year. Oh, oh, they eligible for the stimulus.
But the, but the point I'm saying is like, it, it, it has to be a labor of love and dedication because there's no financial gain from it. Like, you know what I mean? Like, I put in, especially as president now, easily twenty, twenty-five hours a week. You know, and if I went and worked a part-time job that was minimum wage for twenty, twenty-five hours a week, I would, I would make more than I would do, doing this. And, 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 um, and not have the, uh, the, the criticism that, that I stand up to every day, you know, because I, I believe in what we're doing. But I mean, it's like, I remember I had a principal who, uh, was a business owner, and I see him, and he said, Ron, it's, it's the most thankless job you'll ever have.
I like that, yeah, thankless, because it's always you guys' fault. Even when it's takeover, it's always the school board's fault. They're like, get him out of there, we need a new school board, but the school board isn't even making the decisions.
And it, and the, and the decisions that we have made, I, and I, anyone has ever challenged, like, well, you know, what, what good are you? I was like, well, tell me the d- d- decision that we made that was bad for education. You know, like, no one can, can tell you that, because usually when people don't like you, there's that one thing, right? Now, I know there's a, I, I know there's the, the issue of, well, student performance is why you're there, and, and they haven't done, and, and they haven't reached that for the most part. But what we're looking at here is that we are trying, as a school board, to hang on to the programs that we had in place that were helping, helping students. Like, there were, I can't tell you how often Youngstown Early College was under attack. You know, like, like, they, like, people wanted it to end. And that program has graduated more associate degree people, students than Y S U's regular enrollment. You see what I'm saying? So, 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 like, it, it, it is extremely impactful. It does some great things. And we, we are fighting for teachers to have the supports they need. Um, because if, when you have children that need help, they need tools to do that. And we've been fighting so that they have those things in place. And a, and a, and a lot of other things too. And we've been a watchdog to ensure that finances are spent in the best interest of our community. However, we don't have the ability to stop a lot of it, but we do have the ability to let everyone know what the record is.
Okay, let's clear this up. There was a levy that was put on, and the people, the papers, um, some people were putting out misinformation, and they were saying that the school board is against that levy. Can you clear that up?
If the school board was against the levy, the citizens would have never had an opportunity to vote on it. What the school board's position was, was that we wanted accountability for the spending. And at that time, there was a deficit of over twenty-four million dollars.
Wait, wait, ah, hold on, hold on. Twenty-four million we had before the state takeover, and now it's a deficit? So after the state took over, our twenty-four million was gone?
They, yeah, the CEO spent it without any checks and balances.
Okay, go ahead, carry on.
So, so, so the thing, what, with the, with the school board was, so with the, so what the school board was saying was that, hey, you want our citizens to give you more money when you have not appropriately handled the surplus that you inherited? You inherited a surplus, just like when, just like when George Bush got a surplus from, from, uh, from Bill Clinton. You know what I mean? You know, you got, you got a surplus and you spent it away. So they, they spent it away, and the issue was like, now you wanna levy from our, from our families. Not to say that we would have been in this situation either way, not to get that levy, because a levy is funding for future years. But, but the thing was, we were in better shape to be able to handle, to be able to use the monies that would come in in a more constructive way to improve the educational experience of our students. That's the piece there, that, that people sometimes don't understand. So the board was asking for accountability from the CEO. And it's so funny that you should mention that, because I think the person you're talking to actually sent a letter to, to everybody who was a, a need-to-know person about this, describing the situation that had happened here with the budget.
Oh, okay.
So either, either they did not read my email, or they, they, or they read it and chose not to listen.
So that's how that got out into the community, hence, i.e. back to me.
I guess so. But, but the point, the, the thing was, I mean, I'll let you see the letter, you know, it is not, you know, but the, the thing was, it wasn't a thing to say the board was against the levy. The board was for accountability of the money that our citizens were about to give the district.
Okay, and if.
And so we asked for, so we asked for a plan from the CEO. We wanna plan, we wanna, we wanna plan from you on how you're gonna spend these dollars.
Okay, well, that, the people wanna plan, because if you put, that means it's coming out of my pocket, so I wanna know where my dollars are going. So you're asking for the community, and then it was flipped around. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll see, I'll send you the letter, that's not a problem. I sent it out to, I actually sent that letter to the governor and, um, all, there's a lot of state legislation, media, and all that stuff. So, yeah, I'll make sure you have it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, any last words that you want to share that we didn't cover? I wanted to get that out there because.
I, I thought you were gonna have, I, cause I, cause this is the thing, on shot taco meal, they, they don't give you, they just say, come on this show, we gonna put you under the pressure. Cause I thought.
Right, Nick, like.
Under the pressure. You know what I'm saying? Uh, but I thought you were gonna ask about school reopening, because that's been a big thing.
You know, we talked about that, and I know that the school was not reopening. See, we got the.
Well, hold on now, what, what do you know?
Well, wait, what, okay, I'll tell you. What I know is that, um, the CEO, uh, Justin, I, I need to get him on the show too. The CEO, um, said that he wasn't, that we weren't gonna let the, um, they weren't gonna open up. And I guess they had like some type of deal with, uh, Uncle Dewine, and they were supposed to open, so a lot of schools didn't open, and he was like, boom, I'm not opening, they're not ready. So you have those that are looking, he's, and, and I'm just gonna, I don't, you know what? I hate to speak for the person, I'll allow him to speak, whereas maybe not a safe place, because there are people who are still, you know, nervous about sending the children in. And I seen where it was written, I wanna say K through first grade first, and then it's like K through fifth, but those, that, you know, they little Petri dishes instead of the high school ones. And I think like the high school would be more, you know, those are ones that's getting ready to get out, where at least kindergarten, so you could catch up with, you know, you could catch up, let them catch up, but the ones that are getting out of school and going into the real world, I'm gonna need for them to be educated, because I ain't gonna lie, when I get into my little senior years, when I get really seasoned, I'm gonna be asking, when did you graduate? Did you graduate twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Because I know they was just releasing people. So I, I.
All right, so this is what I wanted to share with you, because you're, you're partly right. As of yesterday, you were right.
As of yesterday, I was right, we got hot off the presses. Tell me about it.
Yeah, so, um, this was released from the, uh, from the CEO on Friday at four o'clock. Now, just earlier in the week, he said that school, that only the, uh, pre-K through first grade would go back to school, um, on March twenty-third. And then other students would come back a month later, and then it seemed like upperclassmen wouldn't come back until the following year. So now, with, with, what it is, is that all Young Souths East School scholars will have the option to return to in-person instruction next month. So all Young Souths East School District scholars will have the opportunity, will have an option of returning in person for, returning to in, in-person instruction beginning, uh, the, uh, the week of March fifteenth. Uh, pre-K through fifth grade will return Tuesdays and Thursdays beginning March sixteenth. All scholars that ran early college, regardless of grade level, will. All scholars that ran early college, regardless of grade level, will return in person Tuesday and Thursday uh, beginning March 16th. Sixth through 12th grade will return Monday and Friday uh, beginning March 15th. Families still have the option to continue with remote instruction full time. Justin Jennings, uh, CEO Justin Jennings says he remains mindful of guy, of guidance from the Center for Disease Control. Um, I'm going to skip that part and move down to the next because it's just him talking about, he's going to monitor social distance and that kind of stuff. The Wednesday will, will, will be reserved for education, educator office hours, professional development and deep building cleaning. The school district will still have uh, weekly food distributions on Wednesdays. Remote instruction will continue for all scholars on the five day, on the days in person in- instruction isn't uh, occurring. Surveys are being sent out to families to allow them to uh, indicate their preference for in-school or fully remote instruction. Parents and guardians will not be permitted into the buildings.
Parents and guardians are not admitted into the building.
Will not be permitted into the buildings.
Okay, um. According to the, would it, go back up. Would you say he's following the guidelines from the CDC? I look at that daily. I see some of it as far as like the healthy environments and healthy operations. Um, I would like to know what part.
So thi- this is what he says.
Cause people could put in, you can say a CDC guidelines, yeah, when?
Well, let me, let me read, let me, then I'll read the whole thing. It's not, it's not, it's not long. CEO, CEO Justin Jenny says he remains mindful of the guy, of the guidance from the, from the CDC for disease control. After talking to other school officials from across the state, I believe that if we follow all, all of the mask and uh, social distancing requirements, we will be able to open all our uh, school buildings and still keep scholars and staff safe. We will continue to monitor the virus situation and make adjustments if required.
Okay. And I'm going to add to that, if your child is sick, if you think they may have COVID, you have to isolate. You still have to isolate, even if you have been vaccinated. If you've been vaccinated, that does not mean that you are COVID free and you get a pass to just go on out and do your own thing. That is not true. You are vaccinated and still wear your mask, okay? Social distancing, I can't say that enough. I have seen where people are like, oh, I got the vaccine. I could come over here. Back up, give me six feet. Not playing around. Um, I want to talk about this really, really fast. Talk about this last hot topic and then we're going to end the show. Um, Mr. Shad. When, before we got to this place in the whole state takeover, the community says that they weren't aware. I was aware because I was there. They weren't aware of the whole state takeover. So now we're in a position where we're actually in it. Is there anything that the community can do to try to assist to regain control? Because I have a problem with someone appointing someone that is not even from this area. You got people jumping on the bandwagon like, hey, how you doing? We already know how it is. They want the popular kid. Let me see what I can get up out of you. You the new student. Here you go. How you doing? And I want to be your friend. And let me tell you, when they're only looking at personal gain and not the game of the future, because their children are not even in Youngstown city, city schools.
I, I would say. There, one, one thing is that um, Mayor Tito Brown has been in support of local control and he sees the, the importance of it. Um, tha- that's one thing is, is uh, to recognize what the work he's doing. Yeah, the, the other, the other work is, you gotta, as you so lovingly call him, Uncle Dewine. You gotta call Uncle Dewine. Get Uncle Dewine on the phone and you got, you gotta tell Uncle. Um, hey, this is what we want in Youngstown because what, what's happening is legislation is almost unanimously leaving the House. And when it gets to the Senate, it gets locked up in committee and we haven't had enough Senate support. Now, we have a Republican, Mike Ruley, who has been an advocate for us. Mike Ruley, uh, Michelle La Porhagen have been advocates for us. And tha- that's bipartisan support. She's a Democrat, he's a Republican. She's in the House, he's in the Senate. But they're trying to get this work done for the betterment of not only Youngstown students, but Ohio, Ohio students. You know, thi- this is, this fight, and I, and I tell board members this, we just came up with goals and I told them, I was like, we, our fight is paramount for the existence of public education. Not only in Ohio, and not only in Youngstown, but in Ohio. It may impact how the nation looks at public education when it comes to school takeovers. Cause we, we, we're not going, we're not going softly into that good night on, on this. We're not letting, we're, 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 we, we are fighting for this. We've been down to the State House several times. We've also um, talked to the Ohio School Board, the how, the state, the Ohio State School Board. And the day we spoke to them, they passed a resolution to end, a, a resolution to repeal HB 70. Now, they don't have that, that power to do it, but it was symbolic because that was a, a, a state body that also said this is wrong.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. You heard him. Uncle Dewine, we got to call Uncle Dewine. And if you're on uh, social media, uh, hashtag Governor Dewine and you know, make your post as far as like saving.
And contact the Senate.
The State Senate.
And not just ours, but everybody.
Well, I know what's going on because like you said, it's not just affecting Youngstown City Schools. Um, to my understanding, your last meeting that I was in, um, it affected Lorraine and what, East Cleveland?
Lorraine and East Cleveland. But there were four, there were 14 schools, including Columbus and I, and some other ones. I can't remember all of them. They were on the brink of being put under this legislation. But because of our advocacy, we were able to have a moratorium put in place. And then when the moratorium hit, uh, like soon after that COVID hit and now everything is sort of like in a standstill because of the grades. But there's a, there's a very good chance that this could open up very quickly to, to more school districts. And I, I personally had opportunity to, to speak with uh, some legislators and I told them, I was like, do we want Ohio uh, public education system that is ran from the governor's office or from the local people?
Okay. Well, on that note, I thank you for coming on. I know that you're a busy man and we truly appreciate you. That's the president of Youngstown City School Board, Ronald Shad. If you have any questions, I'm sure he'll answer you. And I'm sure that there's those who have questions, well, and the questions are because of, they don't understand the jargon. That's why I wanted you on Shop Talk with Mel so we can like keep it 100. You know what I'm saying? Let's talk to the people. Let's sit at the kitchen table and let's converse. So I truly appreciate you coming on. Thank you so much. Um, and he said, reach out to legislation, reach out to the Senate, reach out to Uncle Dewine. That's what I call them and let them know. We want control. I want to be able to reach out and touch the person. Well, six feet, you got to move back, but I got some questions, you know, about my future. And we know that children are the, uh, the future of tomorrow. So I don't want, like somebody that I'm never going to be able to talk to, but you can talk to, well, listen, we, we voted them in. We voted the governors in. So guess what? Your vote does count and the governor needs to listen to you. I'm done. I'm off my soapbox on that. I want to ca- um, talk about, so thank you again for coming on. I truly, truly appreciate you. For all my people with social, um, on socia's, like us at, like us everywhere. At Shop Talk with Mel, join the YouTube, please. I appreciate you. Subscribe to the YouTube channel. We got to get this hot topic out the way, fresh off the press. Gorilla Glue Girl, you hear me, Nick? We need Rugo. Rugo got to come and talk to us about this one. But the Gorilla Glue Girl, listen, what happened? The plastic surgeon that got the glue out of her hair, she wanted a boob job. Now, we know that Rugo is like, I'm not giving them any money or what are you going to do with the money? And it was, how much was it, Nick, that she got, that she raised?
It was like about a hu- a hundred. It was around 20,000, 25,000.
So as he was examining her for this boob job, he found two lumps in each of her breasts.
Oh, my goodness.
He found lumps in her breasts and she said the silver lining to it all, as far as her with the whole glue was that she would have never known that she had lump in her breast. So women, please do yourself breast exam. She probably, it probably was her norm. It probably was her. To my understanding, she had five children and we have that fatty tissue. We might have lumps. They'd be like, oh, okay, that's just fatty tissue. And not looking at it, but he did find that. So now she's able to go further. Don't get the breast exam with the GoFundMe money. Use that. Listen, Gorilla Glue Girl, what's her name? Tessa? What's her name? Tessa or something? What is it?
Tessa.
If you are listening to us on Shop Talk with Mel, take that money. Don't you start not another GoFundMe. Talk about your cancer problems. Take that money that you was going to get that breast exam with and you give it to a doctor, give it to a cancer doctor or oncologist, okay? All right, lovely people. That is my time. I thoroughly enjoyed you as I do each and every single Saturday. Find you, embrace you, most importantly, always, always love you. Until next week, people. Right here on yourspreacher.com and Blog Talk Radio and all social networks. All right, be great today. And have a wonderful day on purpose. I love you for listening.